Okay, all right, being six o'clock, we'll call meeting to order first order businesses.
The United States of America and the United Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll review and approve the minutes of February first. Motion and a second to approve as written, any further discussion? So none, all those in favor, that's everybody, members reports, Charlotte, we'll start with you. And I probably should, but I don't have anything, so. All right, and we'll go right on to Tom Mander's report.
The bridge edition meet the candidates that was put out last week, it is online link to the website link through Facebook, it's available hard copy here at the town office. There should be some at the bank and at the library town report that finalized proof went to the printers today, those should be available next week. The applications for planning board are still available and being accepted. We're expecting that an appointment would be made there probably mid March or first of April. Absentee ballots for town meeting are now available, that's going to be your election of officers, any elected office and your referendum questions, that's the site plan review for solar, that's the marijuana. Medical marijuana retail opt in and moratorium ordinance, the three questions there are all absentee. And then Monday is a holiday, President State non emergency departments will be closed. Back in December, after shortly after the airport advisory committee met. Last, we sent a letter out to all the hanger owners asking them to declare contents of the hanger. FAA regulations require that hangars be used for aviation related. Causes, reasons, whatnot, so pretty much a plane and associated parts and pieces and whatnot. We had a large number of people that did not respond. By not responding, the argument is that they are going to be in default of their lease, they're not willing to declare that they're using their hanger for aviation related use and so. We're sending letters, it's going to be a threat to cancel their lease, it will be in default of the agreement unless they comply. And then even at that point in time, we're going to probably be looking for interior inspection of those that weren't compliant to make sure they haven't turned into self storage units. It sounds a little radical, but the number of hangars that have been, number of planes that are based out of our airport continues to fall. We have fifty some odd hangars and we have twenty some odd planes. And hangars are in high demand, the course of action is fully supported by the airport advisory committee. And even when all of these things are turned in to declare what there is or isn't for aircraft, the airport advisory committee has said. It's all a part of the airport success, we're all in this together, we're all held to the same standard. And they're going to go through the list of hangars and aircraft and do the best that they can through their own knowledge to make sure that we have complete records. So that's excise tax revenue for the airport on airplanes, it's relatively nominal, but you know, some people are paying, everybody needs to be paying it, so we're going to.
Is no annual inspection, there's.
No, there's no right to interior inspection, so pretty much we would have to say you're going to be in default. And we're going to order them into fall and then we would be privy to an interior inspection with fair notice to say, okay, no, you're not in default. The burden then comes on to them for that. So it's difficult, but you know, those pilots that are out there, they're pretty aware of what's where, who's where and with what. And so I was just really surprised at the number of people that just did not respond. Right, right, so it's just the airport advisory is, we're going to get to them later in the agenda in a non action way, but. They, I've been very supportive of the goal of getting our inventory pulled together there. Economic development tomorrow, main laboratories, we were talking about that briefly before the meeting, the new PFAS testing facility on Main Street, former Dr. Baker's office. We've been invited into there to take a look at what they've been doing to ramp up in order to open. I reached out to mid main chamber of commerce in Waterville, we joined with them a year and a half or two ago. And asked their executive director and staff if they wanted to join, this is going to be the first PFAS testing facility in the entire state, so it's a good news piece for us, it's a nice attraction. And it's important to not just Norwich, but everybody in the region that's affected by this, so. Yeah, it's negative because it's PFAS, but the fact that that business has chosen to locate here is a big win for us, so. And it's a low impact in terms of service user, so we like all of that. So we'll hopefully have some sort of follow up, a little bit of wrap up information, maybe even a newsletter article to share about what they're doing there. The audit for twenty two is almost complete, the short reports finalized. And that went off to the printers this morning for inclusion in the town report, that process seemed to go pretty well. The franchise fees, we received that yesterday, that's just under twenty one thousand, another one thousand dollar decline over previous year within budget. Just the same, your assistance of firefighter grant from FEMA, that was submitted last week by the fire chief. We should hear back on that no later than April thirtieth, this is probably the last round of grant application. For the SCBA equipment that will be eligible for before we have to talk seriously about how we fund the that purchase locally. Dave Savage has worked tirelessly with other communities that were successful in their grant applications, whether in part or in full, to try to. Tailor our application to be what more like what was successful. We also had one more month with Greg Babus down in New Hampshire, that was the grant review consultant that the fire department had employed. So he was also able to put eyes on this application once again, so we're hopeful there, hopefully before spring, we'll know more. Yesterday, I testified in favor of LD three fifty four and act them in the laws regarding the use of engineers on public works projects over one hundred thousand. This is a bill that I had asked Senator Farron to continue to consider sponsoring any public works projects over a hundred thousand require engineering. And if it's under a hundred thousand imposes undue risk to public safety. Undue risk or public safety, then it requires engineering. The idea that a hundred thousand dollars was a reasonable threshold at this point in time seemed unreasonable. There's no inflationary measure hadn't been reviewed since two thousand and five, so I thought we could bump that up, he thought it was easy innocuous. It did not go that way, so I spent three hours in the room yesterday with people that were interested from, you know, parks. And let's see, to transportation, the governor's office, senate offices, towns, the municipal association, trying to figure out where we're going to go with this. The committee has asked me to attend their works session on the bill and has pretty much said, there were members there that said, you know, give us what you want and that's what we're going to support. So kind of surprised, seems as though they're going to pull that threshold away and it's just going to be engineering on projects that pose that undue risk. And threat to public safety, so it gives us a little bit more autonomy and we know that, you know, unnecessary engineering costs, it's not where we're at. And we've had some bad experiences, the replacement of truck twelve up to public works. That information gathering is well underway, we've got four or five different options on the desk right now. And it's, you know, we're going to be looking at price and delivery time is what's realistic with that. And then the newly increased sewer rates took effect February first and those will start to be incorporated into bills progressively begin in March.
Thank you. Discussion action on February fifteenth, general warrant. Number six, number four, actually. Motion a second, any further discussion? EOP incorporated?
Office products, they do the shirts for.
What's the RHR Smith and Company?
That's our auditing firm.
Seeing none, all in favor? So everybody?
Nope.
You know, jam, sneaky jam. It is, it is.
Just, I should have brought this up, but it was behind this sheet, Peter was able to go back through historic salt loads because we paid for salt tonight, seventeen loads is the same as last year, but the prices increased by thirty two percent.
So that's where we average is seventeen.
So far. So far, year to date.
And that's where we were at load wise last year at this time of year, so we're not using more, it's just possible.
Yep, and a load is. A full, it was an eighteen wheeler, this is that what we do, okay. Uh, right, when we both. Yes, okay, all right, discussion action on February fifteenth airport warrant.
Finally, we put the airport warrant in the amount of twenty four thousand two hundred and fifty seven dollars and sixty five cents.
More than seconds, any sort of the discussion? All those in favor? That's everybody. All right, discussion action on February fifteenth, so commitment.
Well, that we put the circuit minimum amount fifteen thousand eighty eight dollars and forty five cents.
Motion a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, so everybody? And public comment? Okay, moving forward, discussion action on accepting foreclosed properties.
Just a formality at this time, we have three properties that are subject to automatic, were subject to automatic foreclosure for non payment of real estate taxes. Map twenty one lot seven, two fifty seven Oak Hill, map twenty eight lot thirty seven seventeen Wade Street, map fourteen lot forty four, that's a land only parcel on Airport Road. I've also attached property cards for your reference, that'll go into your meeting deck here. Pretty much it's the formality that you accept it, we are not able to do anything with these until after town meeting. So what I've done is I have extended a redemption. Window to the taxpayers that gives them one amount due on or before three fifteen. Which is your last meeting before April first, which is our legal date of assessment. And then after three fifteen, I think through four fifteen, the right to redeem having that extra years taxes included. I didn't want to throw the extra years taxes on if somebody was able to figure out what they wanted to do. Before that, so realistically, these would be three pieces of property that would go to land sale if. They're not redeemed.
Yeah. Yeah, that's interesting, it is, I'm surprised.
I mean, one of those.
Well, so we definitely want to. Motion on those to.
To accept the list of foreclosed properties.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, that is everybody? All right, discussion action on airport advisory committee recommendations.
So no action here, I had put this on your agenda based upon the fact that. Airport advisory was meeting on Monday afternoon and not knowing exactly what was going to come out of that. Ken's here, so when I'm done rattling my mouth, I don't know if you have anything to say or share thoughts about what we've gone through, but. We had put the brakes on with snow removal equipment and the price tag on that and the potential need for tractor, given the hours that were on it. And whether or not that project should take priority over taxi lane improvements that are in need. And so I took that to the airport advisory on Monday hour plus or minus. And they pretty much have settled on the solution that snow removal equipment still remains the priority for the airport. I've reached out to the consultant, the question is for them, can we do it more efficiently, cost wise? And replace just the snow blower on the tractor. That's what they'd really like to see, if we can't do that with grant money, then we go to the whole snow removal equipment, which is a carrier vehicle plus attachments. And yes, it is. And they understand that, and that's why they would like to not have to go through the whole carrier vehicle and attachment and only get after the snow blower. But the nickel and dime conversation comes up constantly and they are understanding of that, and that's why. They would like to just replace the snow blower unit. As opposed to have to go after the whole snow removal equipment package and then that allows them to focus on taxi lanes after that. That's kind of where they're at, that is where they're at right now. I don't know what you have for thoughts, ultimately, we need drug blasting to move ahead, whether it's a snow blower or the whole SRE package or whatnot, but. They don't see. Moving away from some removal equipment is really the best option or the best use of your money. Because then you're going to get caught and you're going to be without equipment when you need it.
So is there any, I mean, is the equipment broken, it doesn't work now, I mean, like, obviously, we're in the middle of February, the covering, we're moving it now.
Yeah, so the snow blowers are real issue at the airport and it's all chain driven, that's what I'm looking for.
Yeah, it's the drive on the. That piece of equipment is like a bicycle chain, it's all chains and sprockets, it's twenty years old. And we can't have snowbanks at the airport. So there's a lot of snow more. And that thing is toast, I mean, if you replace all the sprockets and chains, the. Mainframe of the equipment itself is. So we are, it'd be great to have a big new snowblower, but. Speaking economically, it would be smarter probably to just to get the blower attachment. To run on that track, that track is low, half on and so. It's still a good track, so we could do that and then possibly do some other things that need to be done at the airport too. Yeah, we'll be in a corner here without the blower, we have to get rid of the snowbanks. Airplanes and snowbanks do not go together very well. And we were working on that. It's more.
What is one, do we have any idea of a cost that what the place in this just snowblower is, or as we just like kind of move forward to getting prices on like both options?
Well, we have the budgetary estimate on what the whole package would be. If we can get it covered with federal grant, we don't know what that amount is, we know that that inflates. But then it comes with a ninety five percent contribution from state and Fed. If we can't just get that blower attachment, then we'll obviously go out and look and see what it would cost us cash money to do that. And then consider the whole snow removal equipment. But no, we haven't got that far yet, we need to find out first if it's going to be eligible for grant support, just the blower attachment.
Yeah, I would, I it's a hell of an idea, I mean, why not? I don't know what goes on out there, you know what I mean, you know the equipment, if you're sitting there, that's what we should do, I'm pretty, that's what we should do.
We got the snowbanks, and we've been blowing them for twenty years with that piece of equipment, and it's not a big piece of equipment, so. It's, it's seen many miles. Well, it was supposed to be reamounted originally, but we had it so that we could put it on the front. But yeah, it's like a reamount.
Sixty and seventy two, what is it?
Yeah, it's sixty, I know.
Like a two stage, it's like a. Not a commercial, just a.
Well, it's commercial, but yeah, but still, it's twenty years old, every time it snows, we have to blow all summer. So it's probably the most used piece of public, yeah.
Is that the only piece of equipment that we have?
We have clouds, we have cloud truck, and we have clouds that go on front of the track. But again, we have to get rid of the snowbanks.
Is it a front PTO or is it a hydro?
It's front PTO.
And just calling it off and like dump trucks isn't really a feasible option.
True code, but most economic. And like Dylan said, I mean, just, just the new snow blower head is definitely the cheapest option versus buying the whole new unit. Especially if you think that money should be allocated to other places, especially if we need it.
The high floor one, it's here, it's like ten thousand dollars.
Right, that's right, I figured putting in, you know, fifty or there, so not five, six, seven, eight hundred thousand, you know, it's not the case, so. Yeah, I, do you want an official motion from the board, or I mean, I think everybody on the same page.
That's kind of how they directed me to move, I'm going to reach out to Gail, see what Gail has to say about it, and then, then we'll come back to you, they're not changing, I don't think they're. Their course of action, they've looked at what they would really like, and if they can't have that, then they'll take this, and if they can't have this, then they'll take that.
My only thing that I would want to make sure that we're looking at is that. The snow blower as a standalone isn't available for grant, but the entire package is, if we look at what our five percent cost is on the entire package is less than like the fifty or seventy. It would make sense for us to, and we're just wasting other funds. But still, I mean, if that's, we can then, you know.
You can, I can only imagine, I can only. I wouldn't think so, you have or not, so.
So you, this. Yeah, they have to look at the weather. And the length of the runway and all of this in the. Snow blower has to be engineered precise, this rotary snow blower is going to be engineered to make sure it's got the capacity for this and that.
I just want to make sure when you hear cheaper of the two options. To the town. Whatever's cheaper is what we should really find out.
Yeah, with the hanger, really, so.
Just so you, we talked about it before you got here, it was under my manager's report, about people not disclosing what's in their hangars. We had a large number of people not respond to us, which was of concern and the airport advisory said, you know, this is what we need to do and. And people like Ken is going to be out here almost full time.
Well, right, but if I just write down a bunch of stuff and give it to you, you don't check it? Nobody, I mean, you telling me this hangar is out there that haven't been into in twelve years?
I've never been into anybody's, well, there's three.
Right, but.
And then not paying their excise tax or whatever, right? Yeah, that is the stuff.
So why don't we, in our lease agreement, why don't we have an annual inspection, because.
How is that not an FAA thing?
Right, that's right.
I feel like a fire hazard, catch everyone else on fire, so you make sure.
Person who has responded and said, sure, I mean, in your lease agreement, I would want. To have the option on an annual basis with a five day notice to go in and inspect your hanger for compliance, period, whether you responded to the letter or not.
Yes, yeah.
I mean, yeah, sure, I'm in compliance, I'm not going to tell you I'm not in compliance. I'm not going to do the silent and not respond, that's more attention, but I think.
You think that would be a big turn off to people to have to allow that, it would be a turn off for you to have to open up.
My door is open all the time, but yeah, there are people who don't even go out there, I mean. An old lady's got an airplane out there that I sold two or twenty years ago. And that, that hangar's got a tree going up front, yeah, probably doing.
You don't have to inspect every year, but the option to inspect every year, and then if you have an issue, then that's part of your lease.
Pick and choose because then people could say that you're simply. I think you just have like a native ones, and I mean, honestly, just to make it so everyone's paying their taxes, but like, honestly, like. There's, it's A H B one now, like, I think that, you know, to make sure someone doesn't have a plug in like propane heater, I mean. Seems like safety standpoint we should be looking at, they said, just to make sure there's nothing that's a potential hazard, I mean, I'm guessing that everything in your hangar is pretty expensive. And imagine everyone else's is too, if someone does something stupid in the hangar next to him blows yours up, like that kind of stinks. So I would say just from a safety standpoint, we should make sure that it's like.
Food to talk to that committee.
Fine, I'm not going to take it from a safety perspective because we're not qualified to declare any of that kind of stuff. I think from a compliance perspective with FAA regulations about hangars being used for air nautical related. Things is what is why we need to be in there.
And anyway, you want to work there, as long as you're in once a year.
You could explain to me one more time, the whole hanger we hold in front of, if someone builds their own hanger there, they're leasing the property from us. So they own an instruction, they've got a hundred year lease or a year by year, that is that long?
The later ones that have been put in are more up to code. Now, the ones that we built back in the, in the early seventies, you know, those old barns. And they have a piece of Roamex running down from a meter carrying ten, ten hangars, right? Ones like mine, I have to have the, you know, you put electrical in it, the state comes to our specs. So the later, later ones are pretty much up to code, yeah, the old ones are old ones, so you have a little bit of everything, but. I think I'd like this, that we've had to raise prices to cover our deficits, but then you've got people who don't pay their tax. But everybody needs to pay, you know, five bucks is five bucks, and it's fair, fair, and we all, it all adds up and everybody needs a chip in, so. But we've been bitching about that. No, that needs to change.
I mean, as you progress with this policy, maybe some of these old hangers eventually, it's like, all right, you've got to it for years, you can add them up the code, you know, as you move forward.
Some things could change, you know, but yeah, they could.
And if you don't want to change, then hey, we could really use that space.
They could, they could. You know, things can be suggested, certainly.
And if somebody says, all right, I'm not paying for the lease, I'm done with it, is it their responsibility to remove the structure?
Yeah. Well, yeah, no, the wind has removed some structures. But the hangers sell overnight, I mean, they flip easy. There were fifty hangers out there this year for sale, I bet most of them would have been sold because tortoise closed. You know, there's a hundred airplanes there that need to go somewhere. Well, yeah, the hangers are actually. Wanted, just, just some are a lot better than others.
Is there road for expansion out there or is it revenue?
There is some, yes.
In their future plans?
Of course, we've gone from. Old barns with trusses every four feet to. Now we have engineered building, you know, what we're building, have to build now, a spare. So you're going from cheap. To pretty doggone expensive.
I bet.
We've had that, we've had that area over there, ready for ten years anyway, I was there and nobody's built.
But available now.
It's available.
Yeah, we've had serious inquiries, several in the last year, and it just is costly.
You know, it's, it's what it is, you know, you, you start putting in frost rolls and stuff and. Yeah, on lease property for fifteen years.
Is there any money being made at like the town actually built hangers and rented hangers out, when people tell you like monthly or yearly thing for once that, would that be a revenue stream at all or I mean?
Yes, but what's your, what's your payback time?
Building deterioration will eat you before you make your money on there.
Well, it is possible, I believe, to get a grant.
Right.
I believe Pittsfield's doing that.
Right, but if you get a grant of for revenue generation, then they shut you off for a period of time. And that's the, we have too many aviation related infrastructure needs to go for that.
Keeping it open, because I can't.
So one of the things is that when you have so many people that say I don't have planes in my hanger. And we have a demand for hangars, one way to generate revenue for the airport is to get planes to fly through the airport. Planes that pay excise tax, planes that go to the gas pump and fill up. The traffic in and out of pilots coming and going, all of those things are good for the airport and the community. And that's my root cause for. Making sure that these, these hangers are not self storage.
It isn't coming out, you're not getting anybody any money, then you're just, it's ragging on the whole organization.
Sixty, the base, a base unit, if you will, is sixty and there's double units.
And that's with electricity?
Electricity is all done by privately.
I have like my big hangar, I have one that's in there with me and he pays half of them. Well, spare for him, it's a buck and a half. But it's a. A big one, I don't even know what it is, but.
So someone wouldn't pay like three or four hundred dollars a month to.
Hundred bucks, hundred fifty bucks, they pay. Above that, I mean.
Well, and that's a lot of what we see, we see people just, you know, self storage and things, I haven't been up there.
The airplanes at the airport are on the low end of value for an airport, this is a general aviation airport. And it is, you know, we don't have terrible problems or anything. As an example, like, there's been. Four Cessna one seventy two sold. Three of them with hangers in the last two years. Uh three of them with hangers in the last two years. They've also less than fifty thousand with the hang. Yeah, so. Yeah, this is, this we're talking five dollar.
I hope that you couldn't like, you did anything to actually take you in the sky, less than a grand. And make sure you go back down safely.
I just, I have to buy one tomorrow for twenty five thousand. That's a four four place airplane. One seventy two.
Without the engine.
No, with an engine, with the, you know, it's ready to go. So yeah, it's. Yeah, yeah.
Pretty reasonable probably when you start actually looking. No, no. Oh, you do have to have lights just on a plane? Oh, no, okay, right. No, you can buy a plane if you want.
You can do all kinds of hang flying. And you're not even burning gas though.
What does it cost you right now to get your pilot's license? Because you can't do that, right?
Better than ten.
Really? Than one ten. How long will it take you?
Two months to a year, depends on you.
Yeah. Not too bad.
So anyway, he told me the other day he's gonna retire, so we're gonna have, putting our full time business up to the airport now for aviation.
I'll be out there. Next, uh end of next month, I'll just be working my. Regular job one day a week. And I'll be just working at my hangar on a iPad card. I can do my work up there. And the rest of the time I'll be flying.
Nice. The more, the better. Yeah. Excellent. Okay, you need anything else on that?
No, thank you for coming.
Yeah, no. We don't know this. I don't, I don't get out to the airport too.
Want a drop of candy for me to snack?
Okay, thank you, Ken. Other business.
The only other thing I had was a comment, and that is uh the. Photography contract that we have with Jonathan Wheaton. If you have any locations in town, whether it's something that's prominent or not. That you would like us to try to capture, let me know. Send me an email, text me, whatever. Uh we're gonna build them a list. We feel like we're kind of running out of things that are unusual, that are still distinctly Noradwark. No, not yet. It's on the list.
But one thing I'd be, I wonder if like, he does with a drone, right?
He can.
Well, I mean, we have all the, all the houses that are registered with the historic registry. Get like a recent, you know, because if you look at the stuff that they have, like sometimes it's not a great quality picture or anything like that. You can't see like the property like. You know, for the historical society to be something good for them to kind of highlight and, you know, that's definitely unique to Noradwark, all of the historic homes and stuff, so.
Park in the summer, like this little park in the summer, people in and out with boats or events that are going on down there or. On on your planes or river.
Yeah, like if you try to organize something that like, you know, if you could have like. A seat plane up in the distance and you have someone like way boring behind or something like that, and you've got the bridge like, if you could orchestrate something like that.
We can have somebody waiting behind the seat. A friend of mine in Belgrade. Won a five thousand dollar thing from Captain Morgan. That he did, he he had somebody tow him behind the airplane on a Woski doing the Captain Morgan.
There we go. Feel like a pitcher. Summer of like, you know, the mid main chamber of cars. I mean.
Yeah, so that goes for the board, and it also goes for any member of the public that has any other ideas. I know we haven't done so for my library, this gateway signs, it'd be nice to do that. Um and then I had a few other things like snowmobile and ATV where you could clearly identify Noradwark behind it, those kind of things, so. Town office, the fire station, when it looks nice outside and around. So if you have any other ideas, let me know. It's on the list, it's not picturesque, but yeah.
Thanks. Uh and the only thing I had was really just a comment. Uh I had contacted Richard about the snowbanks for the snowmobile trail going up. Uh the Madison Road and downward hill, uh public works went out and I I didn't get a chance, but man, they did a fantastic job. Uh and then they went around and did it a second time with the storm thereafter.
Can they start doing the old entry school? It's that's honestly like you come out of there and you can't, it's getting dangerous, like I can't see a.
I think that's already a topic of conversation. Is that area, it's right.
They scooped out the end a little bit. I had a conversation with the superintendent on Saturday at basketball. Uh and I had a conversation with the head of facilities yesterday. Pretty much I said, we're not happy, it's a safety issue, and if I have to start going in there with my public works program, I'm gonna be happy to. Uh but we're gonna start building the school department with the expectation that that gets built back to the contractor.
You're gonna just do something, I mean, like you get the school pick up stuff and drop off right now, it's it's becoming like.
We've done a call in for sanding of the parking lot once, just because of wreck. And I know that I've had a private contract and it's done with time or two too, so that's not. That's our tax dollars.
Maybe he didn't, but I'm saying there's been loaders there before, aren't getting paid just because it was a safety thing.
We're following it, and I don't think that it's been well paid attention. Not enough attention.
Well, when someone gets hit, then I don't wanna come to that one, get T bone, and then it becomes something like.
And again, they just did a great job with that. I just. Put up to them. Uh and that's all I have, so I would entertain a motion to leave this place. Motion a second, uh any further discussion, seeing.